There are no changes to this evening's agenda, except I think maybe one item is going to be pulled from the consent agenda, which is item A. Is that correct? Okay, and we'll take that up as a separate item. Then next Monday, October 21st, we're going to have a first reading ordinance authorizing installation of traffic comming at Flower and Jackson, a resolution endorsing the community development block grant project, and a work session on the compost collection program expansion. The following Monday, the 28th, we're going to have a presentation from various committees, and we're going to spend some time with the city manager's activity report and financial Beyond that, Monday, November 4th, we will not be meeting. That's the night before the elections, and the city clerk's office and the building will be in transition to be ready for the election, and things will have to be secure, and so we will not be meeting that night. The following day, Tuesday, November 5th, is the city elections, and Monday, the following Monday, November 11th, is Veterans Day, and therefore, city offices will be closed. And we currently have November, Tuesday, November 12th, as a potential council retreat, but given the standing of various items that we might need to address in a more timely fashion, I'm not sure whether that'll stay that or whether that will become a council meeting. So we have some flexibility and musical chairs on some upcoming agendas and dates for council meetings, and we will keep people posted as soon as we get those straightened out. So at this point, we'll go to public comments, and if anybody would like to make any comments on anything that is not on our voting agenda this evening, actually, well, the only thing that we'll take public comment on this evening on an agenda item will be consent agenda item A, which is the resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with the Old Town Business Association, since that's going to be a separate item. So other than that, anything anybody wants to comment on, if you could please identify yourself, and we appreciate your keeping your comments to three minutes, and Mr. Lovelace in the back is going to go first.
Hello, my name is Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, the Franklin Apartments, your official Peds delegate, Board four. One thing I want to tell people, it's only 22 days before you vote. Three weeks and one day, and I don't know how to tell you people out there that we need all the votes we can get. Everybody knows how I do it. They all compliment me on it, Sam, I'm the inspiration. I'd like to see them out there at least voting, and voting conscientiously. Vote like your life or your rear end depends on it, because it does. We got enough problems with the senior citizens and handicapped getting services now because of the shutdown of the government. And I'd like to ask people to think about how they vote and try to make life better, if you can. Tacoma Park is doing really good. My candidate, I know, is doing really well, and he's just goes to show what can happen if the city works together with their council. Things do work out. You ought to bring your kids over here to get them educated in civics, and get them off the street corners, and have them doing something useful. Make sure your 15, I mean, your 16 and 17-year-olds out there are registered to vote. Please do so. And also, I want to tell everybody, it was a wonderful street festival we had out there on October 6th. I enjoyed myself very well. And also, I want to ask people if they're, if they have their kids are dressing up for Halloween and trick-or-treating, be sure you check their candies, and you check their, and you check their bags for anything that could have been poisoned or adulterated in any way. There are people out there who put drugs in the kids' foods, who put poisons in it, who even put crushed-up razor blades in glass. So please, I've heard reports of this sometimes, so please, don't let it happen here, because I can break a heart real bad and something you'll never forget. Maybe you can bring your kids down to an event that the city's putting on. A lot of times, the city puts on a Halloween party at the municipal building or someplace else, and I'd like to see the city do that this year, because our children are our future, and I care about them. And also, they're going to grow up to be our future councilmen and our future voters, so if you treat them right now, they'll grow upright. So please, for all time, check their candies. You don't want to see your kids coming home doped up on morphine or messed up on broken glass or anything. Please, get them out there and take care of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. Is there additional public comment?
Paul Christowski, 7708 Tacoma Avenue. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the sustainability plan. I forwarded some comments. The city clerk asked her to distribute them. I hope she got a chance to do that. But in general, I wanted to point out to you, I may be one of the few people who's actually read this whole thing from beginning to end. There are hundreds of pages of technical basis of this plan. They're full of calculations, assumptions, judgments, and analogies, and I want to mention that in my field, environmental engineering, it's standard practice for a document like this to have external peer review, or at least independent peer review. Not casting any aspersions on the Brentwood group, they're a very competent organization, but this document is so complex and really so important to the city, I would encourage you to think about peer reviewing this document. Point number two is this document has not been widely disseminated for public comment, and we didn't have very much public input during the creation of this process or this document. I would certainly like to see this document publicized more widely and get more members of the public involved before something is implemented. The action plan needs to be closely coordinated with what Montgomery County is doing on their climate protection plan, and Tacoma Park, I believe, should participate in the county sustainability working group. We can leverage off of what Montgomery County is doing and not have to do all this stuff alone. If we assume that the calculations are accurate, and I have no reason to disbelieve that at this point, our greenhouse gas emissions are already at the low end of the spectrum, and I pointed this out in one of my handouts, we are lower than pretty much everybody. We're comparable to the District of Columbia, but we're about a quarter of what the United States greenhouse gas per capita emissions are alone. That means we're already doing a pretty good job, and it could very well be that if we put a lot of resources toward just dealing with greenhouse gases alone, we're going to be getting some diminishing returns on this. There are other areas in sustainability that might use a little bit more resources than just greenhouse gases alone. The concept of sustainability is a very broad concept, and I have, again, two handouts on this. I want to point your attention to sustainable Maryland categories. You know, the city's trying to get sustainable Maryland certification, and they have many categories, such as natural resources, local economics, energy, got to talk real fast, et cetera. In addition to greenhouse gases, that I think the sustainability coordinator would be useful for helping us get that kind of a certification and maintaining it. Last, I would like to say that the city should develop benchmarks and measurements to see if progress is being made. It's very difficult to interface our greenhouse gas inventory with the county or the state goals, because we have different basiors and different benchmarks. So I really think we need some of our own. That's the end of my time, so hopefully you'll get a chance to read my handouts and ask me any questions if you like.
Thanks, we appreciate the handouts. Anybody else?
Hi, good evening. My name is Rue McKenzie. I'm brand new to your community. I represent Washington Adventist University as the vice president for advancement and university relations. It's my delight to join this community, to be a member of this community now, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the city for its partnership with the only college in your city, so I could, in essence, say this is your college, and we are here, college/university. We are here to help educate the young people and the adults who need higher education. There are two active aspects of education, the receptive and the productive. We not only teach our young people, but we encourage them to be productive. And just a couple weeks ago, hundreds, over 600 of us, were in the community doing various community projects. Some were cleaning Sligo Creek. I myself was engaged in pulling Fox, the devil's tail, rather, a non-native plant that is very aggressive and is taking over in some of the areas where the shrubbery that we like grow. So we engage in our community, and it is our intention to make this a better city for all. I just want to tell you quickly of a couple happenings at the university. We just got three brand-new programs approved. We have an MBA program online beginning November 1, and those interested can go to the website of the university to get information. We also had an MA in alcohol and drug addiction that will begin January 14. That was recently approved by the Maryland Board of High Education. And then we also had an applied associate of applied science in radiologic technology. That also will begin in January. We look forward to providing as much training as possible to not only make this city a better city, but to make our nation and the world a better place, because we will have competent moral leaders who will go out and make a difference in their community. So thanks again for your partnership with Washington Adventist University.
Thank you for coming and sharing that information with us, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Jerry Cowan. I reside at 149 Ritchie Avenue. Be a quick, I want to extend invitations. First, I'm a member of Sligo Baptist Church, and our church is having a roast, and we are on Sunday, October 20th, at 11:00 a.m. What we want to do is extend an invitation, a warm invitation, to all the military, police, and fire rescue workers who have been serving us, and so we want to give back. The church want to give back, and we ask all the military and police department, come on out and eat. And that's all you have to do, is just come and eat a good meal and wear your uniforms, because we want to honor you and your family for the work that you have done, because we want to commend you on that. Secondly, I want to speak about this program also that's taking place right here on November 9th. It's called the Alternative, Alternative to Crime, Prison, and Death, a community dialogue through art, which Senator Raskin's going to be speaking along with myself. We'll have music, and we're just trying to reduce the crime rate that is taking place right here in Tacoma Park. So I'm encouraging all y'all to come out and support. Thank you very much.
My name is Lorraine Purus. I'm vice president of historic Tacoma, and I'm addressing my comments actually to Bruce tonight because I, on the Metro site, and I think that last week, Bruce, I think we were really on the right track with having a public hearing, and I really applauded what I understood to be the process that you had laid out to me, which was first a public hearing, then a work session, and then the third week, a resolution. And I think you heard a lot of serious concerns in terms of this project. A lot remains to be done, and a lot should be expressed about it, and I was, I was very disappointed that, to learn that we're pushing it back, and I know you felt that it was because the compact hearing is getting pushed back, but pushing to January, but pushing it that far is really too many of us, just too late to be meaningful, for the city to have meaningful input, because it's moving very fast. On November 7th, the real estate committee is going to be most likely making a recommendation, assuming the traffic study is expedited and ready, and then as early as 11:21, there's going to be a minimum of 180,000 square feet, a minimum, given to EYA, and there still remain so many outrageous worries and comments. There's, there are no elevations showing, showing this immense structure in context, I mean, next to all the other buildings that are there. So I'm not even sure how many documents the city actually has gotten from Womata to be able to show its people, and there are many people who are working very hard to try to make this a much more in-scale project, and we would certainly welcome the opportunity to have Womata slow down a little bit in this process and actually seriously address them. And for that reason, we really need a resolution by the end of October. It is quite clear, by October 28th now, we need a strong resolution expressing the concerns that you heard, so that the community can do its work to make this project better, and the community does have options as well to move forward. And so we need the city to get back on track, as we talked about, to get that resolution. My goodness, you had John Muir in the room last week, you had Sam Abbott in the room. I mean, this, this is a project that really has a huge heritage, a huge legacy, a huge history here. I can't think of any other that's gone on for so long, since the 70s. I mean, so, so we need the help of the city, otherwise, this is just going to bulldoze all the people here. So please, please, get back on track, have a resolution, have a work session next week, have a strong resolution, and let's work hard to make this better. Thanks.
Jim DiLuigi, 7106 13th Avenue. I'm also here to talk about Tacoma Metro Site development. I'd like to stress again that the real estate committee meets on November 7th, and the board votes is November 21st. I'd like to just say, I've distributed some comments on the design of the building itself. And the current design's not conducive to attracting either significant population or reasonable monthly rents, nor is it reasonably attractive to investors. Those are the objectives of the design, and the design fails in those regards. I am here tonight just to address some of the shortcomings in the apartment building designs. Other people in a group that I'm sharing time with are concerned about other things, such as automobile and pedestrian traffic issues, and the need to protect green space, but I'm not here to talk about that tonight. There are project, significant project scope flaws. The development calls for 212 units, however, the design currently being shown shows 202 units, and deleting one floor, which is currently planned. is currently planned for Eastern Avenue, results in 191 units. The, it's also calling for 180,000 square feet, which I'm not sure can be developed. There are some health, safety, and security flaws. There's a loading dock on Eastern Avenue adjacent to the building entry, right on Eastern Avenue, a loading dock with a trash compactor right next to the entrance. This is unheard of in quality design. It's unheard of in any, any design of an apartment building I've ever seen. Primary public elevator at Eastern Avenue entry is adjacent to the loading dock and the trash and garbage compactor. This is the main elevator to the building, but it only goes up three floors. In order to get to other floors from the loading dock, you need to go up the elevator, down a corridor, past about 20 units, get into another elevator, and go up again. This is all the result of bad design. It's all the result of trying to accommodate a significant amount of parking in a manner that's not conducive to doing an apartment building. The, there are three elevators in this building. The one that I just mentioned near the front, there's one in the middle of the building that just serves the building, goes nowhere at the bottom, and then there's one that goes from the parking garage. Can you imagine the security issues associated with an elevator going from a parking, public parking garage into this building? People going in and out, going to the Metro Site in the back of the building? It just simply doesn't work. There are 103 units, 103 of the units shown in design, which is half the total, face onto narrow courtyards, looking at each other. This is not the quality of life we experience in Tacoma Park. This is not Tree City. This is looking into someone else's bedroom. That's probably enough for now, but you see my comments. I urge you, along the lines of what Lorraine has just said, the city should pass a resolution. Let people who are developing this project know the concerns about the design, know the shortcomings, let them come up with solutions that work, and not let them presume that this current design is workable and should go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thanks for holding this public comment period. I'm Peter Fiden. I'm on Eastern Avenue, also talking about the Metro Site. I have concerns about it also, there are additional concerns, and I'll focus on really the neighborhood impacts of the project. As you know, the impact of development on that site is almost entirely on residents of Tacoma Park and not residents of Washington DC, with the exception of the garden apartments right next to it. So we really bear, bear the brunt of whatever happens there. The Womata stage of approvals is, is of fundamental because once it goes past this stage, it's within the DC Planning Office where we would have some status, but certainly a secondary status to those who actually live in Washington DC, which we, we of course do not. So for that reason, it's really important for this council, I think, to voice its opinion and voice its opinion early about the shortcomings of this project. Jim pointed out the flaws in the design itself. My focus is more on the sheer impact of a project of this scale on a site that is fundamental to the functioning of our community. To reiterate, the agreement that the Real Estate Committee of Womata will, will presumably pass as a result of their meeting on the 7th, will call on the developer to build a minimum of 180,000 square feet of residential space. So that's in addition to the parking, that's in addition to non-residential space. This is a tremendous amount of development, and it's a building that far exceeds anything else that's been built in that area. And it will have been essentially, the train will have left the station at that point, and soon after, presumably, the full Womata Board will approve it, and the developer will, in a sense, be very soon contractually obligated to, to design a building of that enormous scale. And it will be much, much more difficult to have any meaningful conversations with the developer, with Womata, with the DC Planning Office, the further this goes on because of the way the contract is, works, and because of the peculiarities of Womata itself. Womata, as you know, is a regional board. We have certain powers there and influences that we don't have in the DC government. The project will be 212 units, as previously, currently stated, and the, this is on a street, Eastern Avenue, which is, is a street that is basically at failure during rush hour with the traffic lights backing up and not clearing in one cycle of the light. Already, there's a lot of overflow to local streets, I'm sure you're aware of that, Holly Avenue, Maple Avenue, Tulip, all these streets are technically thought of as three lanes, one parking lane and two traffic lanes, but they really don't function that way because two cars can't fit, fit side by side. So any further loading of traffic onto Eastern Avenue, I think, will very readily affect our neighborhood because that, that's where it's going to flow to, and it's already happening. And so I would urge you to, to do everything you can to have this slowed down. The traffic report, traffic study is not going to be available probably for another two or three weeks, and I think it's prudent to say to Womata that they should take no action until they can take into proper consideration the results of the traffic study, review the study with its own staff, and then I think we should be in a position to take a look at that study, see what it says about our, our streets, use that data, have our own staff look at it, and really confirm that the impacts are what, what the traffic study says, and that we've properly taken into consideration how the, how the project affects us. Because I think the council has to look out for the Tacoma Park residents and the effects of this project. If it were across the street in the heart of Tacoma Park, or across the street in our jurisdiction, this would be an enormous, enormous issue. And the fact that it's across the street makes it no less so, in terms of its impact on our neighborhood.
Thanks, Your Excellency.
Thanks a lot.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along to council comments. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had two questions for Mr. Kenner for, to get back to me on. I was very proud this last budget year to support some grant funding for the Man Up Program, and I would just like a report on how that money is planned to be used. And then kind of the same question, I had worked hard to get $20,000 for vocational training program for the young adults in, in the city. Have talked about how we could possibly best serve the young people, young adults in the city with that funding, and I talked with the Recreation Director, Greg Clark, but I'd like to get an update on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
First, Tacoma Metro. I had the chance, thanks to my neighbor, Jim DiLuigi, to look at some of the current floor plans for the Tacoma Metro Building, 102, 12 units, 180,000 square feet on that site. I have a bit of a background in real estate development, planning and financing projects. And so I can read these things pretty easily, and I share some of the speakers' concerns. The timing is one concern, obviously, of, in terms of what we decide to do. But I also think that this site represents an extraordinarily great opportunity for terrifically well-designed, high-density facility to be built virtually on top of the Metro Line. And what is being proposed there is something that is spread out over the entire site such that it's so, it's so broad in its space that it makes it really hard to function as, as a residential building. The comments with regard to the relationship to Eastern Avenue, I think, are accurate from what I could see. It's just incredible to realize that Eastern Avenue has a 26-foot-wide cartway, and yet it's, not only is it, does it handle the bus, buses that come into the Metro, but now it's going to also handle those residents in the new building who have automobiles, in addition to those who are going, the people who, patrons of the Metro who will choose to park with, which would then be under the building or in the building, plus the service vehicles for, you know, all the moving vans that come, that people move in and out, the service vans for people, for that occupants of the building will be, from time to time, using. The trash removal, all this on a, on a very narrow residential street. I mean, it's, it's a narrow street, it's a residential street. It's, and I, and the, the elevations, which were just sort of sketches of the Eastern Avenue facade, seem to still show a fairly high, high roof line, very close to the, to be-built line, and that's, just seems to be unnecessary. I, I don't understand, in addition to some of the things that we just heard about, about the design of the project, I don't understand why putting parking underground, maybe a couple levels of it, like is being done, or has been done, in the project being built at the corner of, of Maple and Carroll. If that project can accommodate under subterranean parking, it would make a lot of sense for them to do the same thing. I have no problem, at this point, from my perspective, of that many square feet on the site, or that, that number of dwelling units on the site. I think it should be a site that, that contains a lot of density, if we're going to truly believe in TOD-type of, of development. Normally, when you see these kinds of projects built like this in places, say, like in Arlington, Virginia, they're vertical, and they, the, the main height of the property is back as far as possible from the adjacent two- and three-story residential structures. And you put a lot of, you preserve the green space, and you give a lot of birth to the, to, to the, to, to the adjacent low, low properties. So this would make a perfect location for much, much more of a vertical structure on a much narrower footprint with the subterranean parking and that sort of thing, where Eastern Avenue doesn't have to be the front door to this project, as well as the, what would you call it, the service entrance to the project, side by side. It's just odd. And I realize that there are, there's some very real constraints. There's no reason that the buses that come in there need to have sunshine where they park and pick up people. Look at the project at Bethesda Metro Project, where the, all the buses are built well below the, the office buildings there, and they work perfectly fine, and that's the same sort of thing. You could build a platform over the area where the bus bays are and build, build your project on that. I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer, but I don't think I need to have, I'm glad we're going to have a traffic analysis, and that's a good thing, but I don't need to have a traffic analysis to be able to look at the, the, the design sketches at this point and see that this is not, this is not a design that, that is very successful. I think if you had a design competition, this would come in about sixth place compared to what could be built on that site. I completely understand the need for Metro to be able to profit from this project, and for the, and for the developer to be able to profit from it and make it a very viable project. And I think all of that, all of them can become winners, including Tacoma Park and the, and the residents on the DC side of the project, as well as the occupants. They need to have a functional building that's easy to get into and out of, whether on foot or by their own vehicle, to get in and out securely and in an attractive setting. And I just, I'm not, I haven't seen any, I haven't seen enough evidence of that, and so therefore, I, at this point, it's really hard for me to be able to say how the city can appropriately comment on, on plans that have been, that are in the, that are changing and are still kind of vague as to what this, what this project's going to actually look like, and what it's, how it's going to be, what its internal functioning is going to be, as well as its externalities to the surrounding community and the preservation of the existing green space. I think all can be done, but I just think that there, this project, the way it's suggested, and I would say that word, suggested, because that's about what I think it is, 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 is not, not going in the right direction. So I hope we can have a, a good, good, strong work session on this, and, and hopefully have that work session based on better information as, as to what, what's going to happen at that site so that we, we can comment intelligently on it. A couple other things, the Sustainability Plan, which we're going to be discussing tonight in a work, in our work session, I just got it today. I haven't had a chance to read a word of it, so I think that's, creates a difficulty, but we'll do the best we can. I'm interested in, was interested to hear the comments by Mr. Kristowski about, about what he's seen so far. And third, and just as importantly, in this current election coming up, some of us on the City Council don't have an opponent to run against, and so there isn't, there is inherently not going to be an opportunity to have a debate on issues. But I still feel, as a candidate who is running, been nominated, that we have a moral responsibility to do something and to campaign, and what I'm thinking is that it's important for me to maximize my exposure to the, to the voters in Ward 6. And, and since I'm, I'm not out, I don't need to solicit votes because I don't have an opponent, what I really want to be able to do is to hold, like, community gatherings over the next few weeks, couple, two and a half weeks or so, while we still have time, so where I can talk to people. I think this would be the best I could do in terms of serving our residents and giving them an opportunity to understand the new voting rules, the new registration rules, and to express their concerns and to find out who I am and ask whatever questions that they want to do. And I think that's probably, that, that's my idea of how you campaign when there isn't going to be, when there's only one pugilist in the ring. I just don't want to do, spend two or three weeks out there shadow boxing. So those are just some thoughts, and if anybody's interested in, in helping me accomplish that in my ward, please listen up and help me do that. Thank you.
I'll recognize the next pugilist, Councilmember Grimes.
So I'd be happy to debate Councilmember Schultz, perhaps add some sparks.
Oh, good.
And we can both win.
Yeah.
As always, I'm very appreciative of the people who have turned out for public comment. Welcome Dr. McKenzie to the community and appreciate the words about outreach that you expressed. Also about community outreach, Mr. Cowan, thank you. I've had the privilege of working with a number of community activists on the Tacoma Metro issue and gaining insights into their thinking about topics that were expressed tonight. Also, I watched the recording of the public hearing about Tacoma Metro last week. Their very enlightening comments, full of insights about community impact of the project, transit impact of the project, what constitutes proper design in the setting that the project would go into. I agree with Councilmember Schultz that it is appropriate to have transit-oriented development on the site. I do think that the Tacoma Park City Council does need to take a stand at various stages in the overall process, which will be a somewhat involved process that we're only really getting into now. The process includes Womata Board votes, first in committee and then in the full board, to revive the now-expired joint development agreement with developer EYA in an amended form. I think it is appropriate and desirable for the council to first discuss, discuss in a work session what we think- a work session, what we think about, we might have to say to the WAMADA board of, to inform their votes on the joint development agreement. That is currently expected to be in committee on the 7th of November, and then, in later stages, we will want to comment, perhaps in advance, and after both, the compact hearing required by the WAMADA compact. And then in addition, we will perhaps want to have a resolution directing city staff to seek standing with the District of Columbia Department of Planning to participate as a party in the planned unit development process. So I, I would add my voice to ask the mayor to schedule a work session, I would hope next week, for the council to discuss the testimony we heard, and our own thoughts and knowledge about the Tacoma Metro situation, and then to schedule, at least tentatively, a council resolution for the week following, that would be October 28th, the last meeting, as was observed before the November 7th Real Estate Committee meeting. So I do hope the mayor will consider that. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to second Councilmember Grimes's request for a work session to discuss, and, and that would need to be next week, the WAMADA plans, and then the following week's session, a resolution. I had already written down, how we, how, how do we go about getting a resolution about this WAMADA thing? So it, it's a passionate issue, it is going to impact the, the residents of Tacoma Park in a big dog way, and it's something that we need to do, whatever we can do to address, and at least slow it down, and/or make it, make it a bit better. I'm not a architecture, an archi, architect, I am not a builder, I don't know how to get the money to do these things, but I can hear the community speaking, and, and, and the community that I, I respect, speaking about such, such a building. Now I'm going to get on with some, maybe some little lighter things, I'm a little lighter kind of a person.
Kind of a star.
I want to say, thank you to the Safe Roadways Committee people for the beautiful lanyard that, that they gave, I think they gave all of us. I don't know if it was just the people who were in the, the 5K, or everybody, but I thank them so much. This was my fifth 5K, this is when I got to ride in a wheelchair, but I still did it. So we, we cheated a moment, though, me and my, my minions. Thank you to City Manager Brian Kinner, Public Works Director Daryl Braithwaite, House, and HCD Director Sarah Danes, for meeting with Pinecrest Community today. I was unfortunately, just wasn't able to go with them. Pinecrest is a very active community association, and they, they have their agenda, and they are not getting off of it, so I think, and they're just going to just keep plugging along, and I think they'll, they'll make a lot of things happen. Save the date, this Saturday, October the 19th, 10 to 3, right out in, on Philadelphia Avenue, there will be the umpteenth annual, biannual book sale. I, I've gotten some really great books. I, I shouldn't tell people that I've given them as gifts, but you can, you can get some really great books that are brand new. Now, they aren't all great, brand new books, but there's some really, and very inexpensive, very, very, a dollar a hardcover, I think, you know, so, 25 cents, I, I, this is, I'm going way back in my memory from last year. So it's worth going, this, it's the Fall Book Sale, it's run by the Friends of the Tacoma Park, Maryland Library. You have to get there early, it's, children's books go very fast, everybody is over there grabbing children's books. So I will also, I, I'm looking at the weather report going icky poo, I'll do my, the best I can to keep the rain away until after the sale. That's one of the things that makes Tacoma Park special. Another thing is the library's willingness to allow people to come in and discuss what, to discuss what role does this library play in their lives. There are one, four special meetings on November 14th, 15th, and 16th. There, this is the only library run in the state of Maryland that's independent, the only one. It's also, I believe, I could be wrong, you guys can correct me, the only library that's open on Sunday in the state of Maryland. I'm, I'm, I may be overstressing a bit, but there.
That's okay.
It's okay.
That's hard to believe.
I, it, you know, at least it is in Montgomery County, there aren't any county libraries open on Sunday.
Silver Spring used to be.
Zippo, zippo. So we have a library open from 12 to 5 every Sunday, to serve, to serve our folks. Gold stars, I, you, I know you were anxiously awaiting this part, we're losing our very special Jim Kuhn, who has been the Friends of the Tacoma Park, Maryland Library Treasurer forever. He's also the, the dad that I'm the grandmother of, Ellie the Cat. I'm the grandmother, he and his wife are the mom and dad. They're going to Rochester, New York. He's accepted a newly endowed position as Director of Rare Books, that newly endowed is a pretty big deal, as Director of Rare Books Special Collections and, and Preservations at, at the University of Rochester. We, even, my heart is heavy that he's leaving, but I'm wishing him and, and his, his lovely wife, and their son, and their dogs, and Ellie the Cat, who runs the dogs, all the best wishes, best wishes and, and good luck. I want to stay hooked up with them.
Sure.
Let's see. He, our, our library staff are providing services, they're a model nationwide. We are providing services that are a model nationwide, but still go to the meeting on 11, what did I say, 11, 14, 15, or 16. Let's see, a shout out to Chief Goldberg, hello, for the Tacoma, and the Tacoma Park Police Department for their arrest record this past week, for individuals producing and selling controlled substances. There are probably more, but that was the, I read all the reports out, those were the ones I could remember right offhand without having to go back to the computer. This was done in partnership with several other agencies. This is another thing that makes Tacoma Park very special. We have a full service to police department, not, I think, maybe Rockville, I don't know, I don't, we may not, there may not be another one in the county, except for Montgomery County, but I don't think there's a municipality with a full service one. So, that's it from my side of the mountain. Thank you for listening.
Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had one question for the, or two-part question for the city manager. About a month ago, we had talked about open space, the city manager, deputy city manager were both here, and there was apparently an old open space plan that the city had, and someone on staff was going to provide that back to council. We also, at that meeting, I believe, made a quasi-motion to update that plan, and then the third part was that the deputy city manager mentioned something called a covenant. Covenant is a, some sort of deed restriction, or title restriction on a piece of property that limits development, I suppose, and the city staff was going to provide an update on the number, location of covenants in the city. So if you could just, at some point in the coming week, give me an update on that?
Absolutely. For the, for the covenant issue, if, help me if this is right, this is related to individuals or entities that contribute land to the city, and whether or not they would have an existing covenant that would keep that space effectively open and free from development, is that?
Mostly, I think the one part is that it's not that they're, they're giving land to the city, but they're, they're ceding a right, you know, the right to develop part of their land, and the city is holding that covenant, or a party to that covenant, and I believe the city even has a model covenant agreement that I think was referenced a couple weeks ago.
I brought it up, it was the easements.
Conservation easement.
Yes.
Yeah, conservation.
Is that sufficient? Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I want to thank Dr. McKenzie for coming from Washington Vintage University. I have relayed to the administration on many occasions to please come to the council and speak, and I'm glad someone came. Thank you. I would like to join my colleagues in asking the mayor to put on the agenda work session regarding the Tacoma Metro development. I think it's important that the residents get an opportunity to formulate their comments, and allow the developer to know what's the best direction for this project, because once it's built, it's going to be there for a long time. I would like to thank the city manager for working over the weekend. A couple of residents in Ward Five had an issue. Brian stepped in and made some calls over Saturday and Sunday that I think really helped residents on Flower Avenue. Over the weekend, I had a conversation with one of the county council members, and I don't know if you've read my newsletter, but I've discussed a lot about tax duplication, and how this is a major issue for the city. This county council member I spoke to does not believe that the way the city currently is, receives its rebate is correct, and will be pushing for a completely different way, a way that the Office of Legislative Oversight has come up with in a very recent report. So I would encourage all residents to send emails to members of the county council, to tell them not to change the rebates, because this county council member was set in making that decision. And finally, I have a health fair scheduled for October 27th. That health fair will be rescheduled, it'll probably be during the spring, and once I have a new date, I'll let everyone know. Thank you.
I have a couple items I was going to bring up. First, let me address the metro development requests of my colleagues. Let me just say first off that we were originally scheduled to follow up the public hearing we had last week with a work session this evening, and a resolution next week that was predicated on the schedule that the WAMADA committee was holding to. Once we learned on Thursday, when that committee met, that they had delayed their consideration, I had some conversations with the city manager and the deputy city manager about the advisability of proceeding with the work session and the resolution. Their advice was that we could wait. I agreed with that, in hearing their understanding of what, what the timeframe is, and what the best process is for getting our concerns addressed in this whole long process. I came to some clearer understandings about when the, a lot of the concerns that I've heard addressed from the community could best be addressed in this process. My understanding fit with delaying so that we could have the benefit of additional information, including that traffic study, which my understanding is the reason for when, for the committee delaying their vote. So I, I'm not even sure that they will have that traffic study in time to have there in November 7th session, to have it discussed at that one. What I did say, when I said we would delay it, was that I thought, given the, the timing that was now evident that we could delay, that I wasn't sure whether January was the appropriate time, or something earlier, and that I was, remained open and flexible, depending on what the circumstances warrant. It sounds like a number of my colleagues, and a number of people in the community want to have some additional input into the process at this point. I would appreciate maybe just a minute or two, if, if the city manager wants to make any comments about the discussion that we had on Friday, just to share kind of the reason why we thought the delay was reasonable.
Sure. The, the, the original joint development agreement date that WAMADA was going to consider, our challenge was always in trying to get a resolution out by the end of October. Because the council wasn't going to have many meetings in November and December, the idea was to try to get that information in October, knowing that the WAMADA joint development agreement was always going to be before we were able to get our resolution, and so now that WAMADA has chosen to delay, the, the joint development agreement meeting, the thought was to continue to, to just delay when we would have the, the work session and the, and the resolution. Again, just, you know, some of the things that went into that, into that thinking were, as many of the, the citizen members and others have noted, there are just a tremendous amount of uncertainties right now. We don't have a traffic plan, the final design plans are not nearly complete.
And our understanding is that there are revisions in process right now.
There are revisions in process, and, you know, knowing that through the, the joint development agreement, and again, just based upon a little bit of experience that I have in, in DC in terms of development process, you know, the, the joint development agreement is likely going to come with some contingencies. Those contingencies include going through the DC PUD process, which likely means that there's going to be a tremendous amount of interest and potential changes that will happen to the design as, as a result of that. You've still got the compact hearing that has not happened, and you still don't have the traffic study done yet, and so it's likely that, that, that the development program can change, because all three of those factors haven't really been considered yet as a part of just the joint development agreement, which is between WAMADA and the, and the developer. Many of the, the design elements still need to be worked on, and still need to be heard, they still need to, to get information out to, to the community in terms of what the final design would be, and so I think, as, as Councilmember Grimes said, this is a longer-term process in terms of where will be important for the city to be active, and I think, you know, certainly now is one of those points, and there will continue to be points going forward.
So the, the gist of the discussion that we had was whether it was advisable to hold off and wait for some more details, to then be able to take those into account in the discussions that we have, or to have discussions now, and then as we get revisions, continue to refine that, and have additional discussions. On Friday, the, the decision I made was to hold off and not have kind of duplicate discussions both now and later, given the amount of interest from the council and the community. I will reassess that, and we'll see where we go. Then, I just wanted to mention that the, I was glad to participate last week, along with Councilmember Siemens and Chief Goldberg, in the International Walk to School Day. That's why we got the lanyards, Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
I didn't walk to school, but I got a lanyard.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's one of the perks of the office. So we, we participated and met with students walking to the Tacoma Park Middle School, to Tacoma Park Elementary School, and to Piney Branch Elementary as well. There were, there was an option or two, opportunity or two, to talk to students, and stress the importance of walking to school, bicycling to school, and scootering to school. And that's an annual event, and it's always very enjoyable, and about, I walked with about 900 students on last Wednesday. The second thing is that at the monthly meeting of the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department Board, I talked with the volunteers at length about some of the concerns that the city had, when we had the resident who addressed us here a month or so ago about the fire in her unit, and the, the lack of information that she had, and the lack of coordination with the fire department, and the fact that it came out that the city had some difficulties in similar situations where our police in similar situations where our police department was not regularly notified when people were experiencing difficulties from fires and were temporarily out of their residence, and it would be good for our police to know, it would be good for our code inspectors and housing and community development folks to know. So they promised to try and put their heads together with some folks at the county and meet with us in the city and make sure that that process is improved. They also briefed me on the situation with the ladder truck that we've been trying to get back to Station Two for, I don't remember how many years now, five, six, seven, eight years. And before that, the process was to prevent it being taken away, which was ultimately not successful. The current configuration is such that the ladder truck is not there and is not promised to be back there anytime soon. There are some difficulties with the current alignment with the ladder trucks in the county. They don't have them at every station, but the way they have them isn't conducive to bringing one back here, but there are difficulties with the way they have them. They have one at Station 24, which is up at Randolph and New Hampshire, and the truck doesn't fit in there, and if they go out the front door, it'll, when it goes down the apron, it'll bounce the back end up and hit the top of the door with the back end of the truck, so they can only go out the back of the station. And they're making major repairs and capital expenditures in a fund that they don't have to try and fix that. So we're trying to work to get the county to see that the way they're proceeding on ladder trucks is not the right way to go, but we have been singularly unsuccessful in doing that over the last number of years. I'm not particularly hopeful, but we're continuing to work on that issue to make sure that there is a ladder truck in Tacoma Park, since we have so many old wood-framed single-family houses and so many unsprinkled high-rises that were built before sprinklers were mandatory in high-rise buildings. And then just a reminder to my colleagues that the Maryland Municipal League Montgomery Chapter meeting is here tomorrow evening, and the, it's a special meeting, and the sole topic of conversation will be tax duplication and how to proceed with the Government Operations Committee of the County Council, which is scheduled to discuss that item later this month. And I think that's it. I still see lights, but everybody had their comments.
Follow-up comment.
Brief.
Certainly. I'm always brief, right?
Usually.
I wanted to add some things to what I said earlier about Tacoma Metro, which is to, I'll start by saying that I wasn't aware before this evening that anyone had conceived the work session and then the resolution as being, targeting later stages in the overall development process rather than the most immediate stage, which is the board votes on the amended joint development agreement. I'll, of course, remind everyone that WAMADA is, well, we have a compact hearing, because WAMADA was created by a compact that involved the District of Columbia, Virginia, Maryland, and the federal government. They report to us and through the state of Maryland, of course. It is our right and responsibility to comment on any board action that WAMADA takes, including one that is across our border rather than in our border. In particular, as I think was Mr. DeLuigi mentioned, the revised, I'm sorry, the amended joint development agreement has a certain floor space for the development in there. It has other conditions. Through the intercession of, well, a WAMADA board member, I believe, there will be included in their language regarding the creation of a park in the current green space. My understanding is it will be a fraction of the green space, not the full amount of it. These are matters of great concern to Tacoma Park residents. Therefore, it is entirely appropriate that the city council comment to the WAMADA board, and we would normally do that in the form of a resolution, to inform their votes on the amended joint development agreement. So that's my further view on the reasons for going ahead with the work session and the resolution prior to the board votes on the amended joint development agreement.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a WAMADA comment or two. A couple of things I don't understand. From the citizenry or from the residents, I understand that if we don't take some action now, the nail is in the coffin and makes the deal fade to complete. But from you, it sounds like, and Brian, it sounds like that may not be, I may not be hearing it correctly. I'm of the ilk that we ought to take some action now, now, not, you know, a couple of months from now, because that might be too late. They need to know. I mean, I assume they know how the city of Tacoma Park feels about this Bayamith building that EYA is proposing to be built. I don't know if they know how strongly we feel about it, but it seems to me it's pretty strong. So if we can just maybe have a work session next week and do a resolution, I, you know, is that just not possible?
They've, no, I'm not saying it's not possible.
Okay.
What we have sent them is a letter expressing concerns about the functioning of the site for transit, that that's primary, and concerns about setbacks and massing and some other things.
Okay.
That we have, we have said all along about anything that goes there, and that those continue to be a concern.
Okay.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll be brief, but I did want to just point out to city manager Kenner that one thing that may be slightly different with this situation than you're familiar with in the District of Columbia is that we're kind of the stepchild, being the Maryland municipality and not a member of the District of Columbia. And so the fear that I have is that the further along this moves, the more solidified it becomes, and so it seems prudent to make our comments known now and then update them later if we need to, but I think we need to keep our hand in the game. Thank you.
That's what I was going to say, only he said it better.
And I would say, based on the concerns I've heard from my colleagues and from the community this evening, we will make some adjustments to the agenda and get back to them.
Thank you.
Okay. City manager's comments.
Just two, I think, quick things. One is obviously we have the election coming up the first week of November. Just want to continue to encourage everybody to get the vote out. I heard lots of positive comments, I think, from councilmembers this evening. Obviously, the first opportunity for the city to test out having 16-year-olds be able to vote, and so it's an exciting election. I want to make sure that, I know from the city staff's perspective and Jesse's perspective, I know we are very excited about it, and just want to continue to convey that. Also, just because Councilmember Smith mentioned it, I just want to especially thank Darryl for many, answering many of those phone calls this weekend. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no questions for the city manager, we will move along to our regular meeting items. As I said, we have removed one item from the consent agenda, so first we have a consent agenda with three items on it, items B, C, and D, and those are two appointments, two appointment resolutions, and one authorizing a purchase. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda?
So moved.
We're here, second.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Daniels Cohen, second, and by Councilmember Schultz. All those in favor? Let's see, it's a single reading ordinance, so we need to roll call vote.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Mael?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimes?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Aye. So the consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now take up item A, which is the resolution authorizing extension of agreement to become a business association. Who wants to discuss and move that one?
I would move it with a modification, if I may. All right. Let me preface it by saying, my recollection, which I confirmed with Councilmember Mael, because he's the actual, he's actually the person who did it, was that the council during budget reconciliation last spring had voted beyond the $30,000 baseline that we gave to OTBA last year for this year, beyond that $30,000. Another $10,000, $5,000 of which would be contingent on a match from the District of Columbia. That is, we would give OTBA for FY14 $35,000 free and clear and $5,000 contingent on a match from DC. I only just a few minutes ago managed to find in council, in my council email, notes in an email message from the city clerk, Jesse Carpenter, from the budget work session April 29, 2013, under budget reconciliation, saying, and I quote, "OTBA, additional $10,000, $5,000 of which is dependent on a match from the District of Columbia." That was a motion of Councilmember Mael's. After additional discussion, the council voted to support Mr. Mael's motion. So I would move the resolution tonight, noting that the document has already been signed by OTBA, nonetheless, I would move it with a modification to be it further resolved that it read, "An annual operating subsidy in the amount of $35,000," with the change in the numerical amount as well, "shall be awarded to the Tacoma Business Association for FY2014 with an additional $5,000 provided upon demonstration." That would require a similar alteration to the amendment to agreement to the Section 2A on the second page.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and it's our council comments. Any public comments?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just make one comment, I think, on behalf of my colleagues, and say that I think that OTBA is doing a great job in many of the activities which we have partnered with them to do.
May I add that I had a conversation with Patty Baker, co-executive director, this afternoon, and they are pursuing that District of Columbia match, so that presumably if they do get that money, then we would do a modification.
Councilmember Schultz.
Oh, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
A couple of questions. How, when it says here that these funds, $5,000, from the city of Washington, DC, is that literally meaning from the government of Washington, DC, or from the businesses that are?
The city government.
Right, okay.
I can explain further.
No, it's, it just seems, $5,000 seems like a very modest sum for the.
It's more than that.
They, OTBA is seeking, seeking a complete match to the Tacoma Park City money, but it's $5,000 that we would make contingent. In other words, we're limiting our additional money to five.
I understand. But, well, let me, let me continue with another, my other question. And that is, is that on the, on the front page of the amendment to the agreement, Article 3, Main Street Tacoma, Paragraph 3, it says, "The organizing committee, the organization committee will endeavor to increase OTBA membership revenue by 20% over membership revenue in 2012." And I'm just curious to know where that 20% comes from, and I gather it's probably something that's been negotiated between staff and OTBA, but it seems to me that the point that I made last, at the budget, when we're discussing the grant to this organization, was that the current business members pay something a little bit larger than the nominal amount of membership fees anyway, and already, and a 20% increase to a virtual nominal amount still remains a pretty small amount. I think our goal, and I hope our goal, maybe not this year with this amendment, but next year, is to get the businesses to commit some of their real money to this organization, since the whole point of OTBA is to help those businesses prosper, and hence to help the city of Tacoma prosper, which is why we put all the money into it that we do. It's not just for the businesses, we, it's a part of our overall success as a city, but it just seems to me that, as I said before, the risk of repeating myself, that the businesses there do get huge amounts of benefit by all the things that take place there that are undertaken and sponsored, organized by the OTBA, and they ought to be putting their money into this organization in a meaningful amount, because some of the businesses are not members of their own choice, but yet they still get all the services that those do. As I was told by the current executive director or directors. That's just a sort of a comment, just think 20% is not much.
Other comments? Check one last time for any public comments. Okay, so the resolution has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously as well. We will take a short break, and we will come back in at 9 o'clock, nine minutes from now for our work session item, which is discussion of the implementation strategy for the Sustainability Action Plan. Implementation strategy for the Sustainability Action Plan. Who's gonna? All right.
Did you?
Hi, do you recall, we had our consultant right over here on the 29th to present the report. Since that time, they made some final revisions. It's still called a draft, but it's the final draft report for the Sustainable Energy Action Plan. And the discussion that we started and weren't able to get through on the 29th was the council's direction regarding the implementation strategy. We do have funding available in the contract work with Brendel Group for them to get us started on an implementation plan. They need guidance from us as to what portion of the priority items or in what way the city wants them to proceed with development of the implementation plan. And I guess I just wanted to start off with a couple of comments. I know time is of the essence, and I will be brief, but I think it helps to kind of capture where we are here. I mean, last year, at this time, the former city manager and myself had come off several meetings with the council with the understanding that we were to develop the, an RFP to move the sustainability work forward. And the clear guidance that we got from the council at that time, and I know we've asked the council, kind of touched back again several times through this effort with the Brendel Group since January, is the focus of this initial piece of work was to be on energy and was to be on greenhouse gas emissions. So I know that question comes up frequently, why is this Sustainable Energy Action Plan so focused on energy and not the broader issues of sustainability? And I have two responses. One is with, is that we wanted to create a manageable, actionable, defined initiative that we could make progress on in a very clear way, and we were bolstering that by asking the Brendel Group to do the greenhouse gas emissions inventory, so we would understand the sources that we're dealing with and be able to create the best plan based on the sources that the city has, not only contributing to the greenhouse gases in our area, but also that recognizes where our sphere of influence is, and that's a very important piece for a city like ours. There are things that we can control and things that we can't, and so the effort was to understand the emissions and also develop a plan that really captured and worked with where our ability to implement would come through. So I say that as a starting point, and here we are, you know, almost a year later. The report has been complete, our greenhouse gas emissions inventory has been updated, and we have some very direct, actionable recommendations from the Brendel Group on priority items for us to move this plan forward. So that's kind of where we're here this evening. Now, it isn't to say that the broader issue of sustainable items shouldn't be ignored or not worked on. One of the things that the council did in setting up the new Committee on the Environment was task them with going through the University of Maryland Sustainable Maryland Certified Program. And I've been at several Committee on Environment meetings, and they are very actively working in that regard. They've been in touch with the University of Maryland Sustainable Maryland Program. They're getting pieces of their application together, and they're getting prepared to submit on the city's behalf over the next several months. The paperwork and reports and requirements that are needed in order to apply for and get credit for certain actions that the Sustainable Maryland Certified Program represents. And I think in Paul's discussion earlier tonight, he, his second page listed those items that are in the Sustainable Maryland Certified Program. So I want to make sure the council and the community are aware that that is something that the council had directed. that the council had directed the committee to do when it reestablished it, and I'm quite sure that, working together with the committee and the city staff, there'll be actions taken on those broader issues of sustainability beyond the energy plan. So that being said, we're kind of back here tonight. I appreciate that the Sustainable Energy Action Plan is not easy reading. It's not a huge, huge document, but it's, it's pretty dense. The topic is not necessarily one that's easily digestible, but it's trying to capture kind of where we are as a city. There was some very good news in the Energy Action Plan, particularly related to the greenhouse gas emissions inventory. On the overall scale, Tacoma Park residents are very energy conscious and obviously energy efficient in a number of ways, particularly in the area of transportation, where we have very high transit use between the metro and the bus systems, and that's reflective in, in some of the report documents. The other thing that the Sustainable Energy Action Plan identified was kind of the area, and it's again, kind of an obvious one when you sit back and think about the city, the area where we have the most gain in terms of energy reduction is in our building stock, be it residential buildings, multifamily buildings, or commercial buildings. That's where the energy use is. The next level down is transportation, but we are doing incredible amount on transportation just by the luck of the location. We're right out here at the metro. We've got a very active bus service within the city, so we've got transit things happening in and around us that our residents are taking advantage of and, and using. And now with the bike share stations and other programs that the planning office is working on and the safe routes to school, the efforts on those transportation initiatives, alternative transportation modes, has been going on for a while and will continue. So, kind of the direction and the recommendations that the Brendel Group came down with in the 17 or 20 or so that they looked at, really, the, the area where we have the most to dig into and the most work to do is, is in the building arena. So now we're kind of back to where do we want the Brendel Group to help us focus with those last $20,000 of implementation? Again, it's not to say that that'll be the end of it. Brendel Group stands ready and able to assist us beyond this initial contract amount, so if there's an interest on the part of the council or the staff person that, that hopefully the city will authorize to move this program forward, there's ways to continue their work and with their knowledge and background, it may be a very, you know, fruitful way to, to continue the program. But at this point, we're looking at, they want us to basically tell them where to spend those implementation dollars. The second sheet that you have, again, it's a little bit of dense reading, but they have kind of presented us with two options for a starting point of this discussion. The first is that they could take, take a piece of three of those strategies that they have identified and, and put some meat on those bones, basically start an implementation plan that would identify kind of the key criteria and the active players and the kind of first, second, and third steps along the way. So their recommendation is, kind of an option A, is to develop three of the priority areas into some detailed implementation plan, not fully, but just get it started. And then the other option B approach is to basically to take one of those priority action items and fully develop it, just as much detail as they possibly can. So with that money that we have available in our contract, they say those are kind of the two, two routes that they can recommend. On a staff level and in talking with city manager and Committee on the Environment and others about it, our staff recommendation, given those two scenarios, and again, based on the discussions that I clearly heard on the 29th, was that there was, seemed to be consistent council support for the idea of hiring a sustainability coordinator, given that that looked to be something that the council was standing ready to authorize, and our recommendation was to work with the Brendel folks to develop three of those priority items, the initial implementation, not develop one fully, but just get three started. At the same time, we're hiring our sustainability person, and then they could come in the door, have some of that initial evaluation, investigation, homework done, but then they could take that and make it their own and just, you know, grow it to the way that they felt would best suit the community and best suit the residents and the, you know, multifamily and the commercial establishments that we have here in the city. So that's kind of what you have before you. We basically are looking to the council, as we always have in this process, for direction and guidance as to where you'd like to see the last of this project, how you'd like to see it focused. And based on that, we'll give the feedback to the Brendel folks and we'll have them start working on the implementation plan, understanding that the bulk of their work is done. They've produced the report, they've updated our greenhouse gas inventory. We have their recommendations in front of us in the report.
Let me just, first off, thank you for all the effort that you've put into this so far, working with the Brendel Group and Committee on the Environment and all the other folks who have had a part in getting us to this point. I'll just say that it seemed to me that the approach A, I basically agree with your staff assessment, that, that the council, I think, is ready to go ahead and hire a sustainability coordinator, and that it makes sense to look at partially developing a number of strategies. And I'll just say that, as I went through and started to see what I thought made the most sense, what I did was, I turned to the charts on page 21, those pie charts, to see where the, where the impact would be the greatest, where the emissions are the greatest, and saw that it was residential buildings and commercial buildings, and then you get the breakdown in terms of the one below it, looking at the residential natural gas and electricity and the, and the commercial electricity, so that then I, with that knowledge, went back to the chart that you have behind the blue sheet, and it seemed like there were some pretty obvious places to start with, developing some implementation strategies for those three. So that made the most sense to me, and with that, I'll turn to my colleagues and Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Darrell, for being here and the work you've done in the past on this. I want to break my comments down into three areas, and, and I'll try to be brief, but they're, I think they're all important. And I want to address, first, the city's overall sustainability work, second, questions and recommendations in terms of this document, and then, third, decisions that the council's making, and so I'll, I'll end where, where the mayor just, just left off. On the broader issues of sustainability, I served on the, the task force a number of years ago, and we have made huge strides in a number of areas, everything from our composting programs to our sidewalks work, to the transit work you mentioned, you know, trees are one of the, one of the areas of recommendations in that report. Well, we have an arborist, and so if, you know, a full-time staff person who's focused on our tree canopy, if we want to do more different things, things that were recommended in that Committee on the Envir, I'm sorry, the Task Force on Environmental Action Report, you know, we as a council can sit down and talk about how we allocate time for tree policy. So we've got many of those things covered. We've really made great strides. I mean, some of the strongest recommendations, and again, I mentioned the composting program, that was something that task force report said to do, and, you know, tick, it's something that, you know, you personally have been a leader on. That's fantastic. And so, as you said, you know, this area of energy is really one place that stands out, that we haven't made a, a big investment, in terms of time, not, I don't, I don't just mean money, I mean time as well. When the council talked about this, maybe a year ago, we started this process of, of contracting, you know, one of the other reasons that we focused on this area is that it's one of the greatest opportunities to save money for people, for everyone in the community, because you lower energy use and you lower someone's bill, the bill they get month after month after month. And that's something we don't get with much of our sustainability work. It's not quite as much of a direct pocketbook connection. And so that's really important, and I, I regret that it's my oversight when we developed the RFP, that although we talked about that narratively in the council, we didn't, I think, put a strong enough dollar number piece in the RFP to say, "We want Brendel to not just talk about the greenhouse gas piece, but also how this would save residents' money." Now, I can read that into, obviously, the more you're reducing natural gas, gas, whatever, coal-fired power plant use, the more you're doing those things, you are saving money, but... And so now I'm transitioning my, into my, into the report piece. If there's anything we can get Brendel to do, to, to hint at, to somehow correlate these energy proposals back to savings in terms of energy bills, that would be really helpful. It could just be a narrative section, they might only be able to talk about it narratively, or perhaps they can put together data based on, you know, current price data, I don't know. But if there's anything they can do in that regard, it would really be a helpful piece of the report. A second recommendation for the report is, I know it's hard to do, but if you can, if they can find a way to cut 500 or 1,000 words, I, I know that there's, and I've read through it, you know, two or three times now, that there's probably a way to get it to be a little bit more concise. One of the things that attracted me about Brendel is when I looked at their action plans and reports from Park City, Utah, and, and Colorado, their plans were really pretty sparsely worded, and so if we can move in that direction, that would be a, a great thing. My third comment about the plan is, I know, and we heard tonight from the public about, you know, going into the detail and understanding the methodology, and I know that the wonks among us like to be able to do that, but for example, when we get a city audit done in our budget, we don't demand to see all of the numbers of how the auditor calculated every formula. You know, to some extent, we hire professionals so we can trust their calculations. So I say that just because I, I think it's helpful that they, they provided as much background as they have, but it doesn't necessarily need to go into this report, and I, I don't think it needs to hold us up. That's, you know, that's why we hired a company that's, that's really good at this work. Fourth recommendation in the report, I talked about this last time, but we don't give ourselves credit for how much reductions we've made since, I think, either 2000 or 2005. It assumes that we've, we've not changed emissions at all in the last decade, and now we're starting, and we're essentially forcing ourselves to commit to a steeper curve, a more expensive set of reductions. And, you know, this, from this building to the Public Works Building, from the city's vehicle fleet, to all the actions residents have taken, there's got to be some really conservative way to estimate some sort of changes over the last few years and build that in. It just gives us a little bit of credit for many efforts the community, the council, the city have done in the last, you know, however many years you want to use, so I'm just hoping that we could address that piece. Last comment on the report before I move on to the decisions piece, multifamily versus single-family residences, I don't know if there's any way to, if there's any data that suggests, that allows us to, to create a baseline associated with those two different types of housing infrastructure in the community? And I remember, at, at some point in this document, or maybe it was the last draft, there's a map, it's like a heat map that shows concentrated energy use, and you can clearly see apartment buildings are dark brown or whatever the color scheme was. So if there's any way to help us get a baseline, five years from now, we might really benefit from having that, because we'd be able to see how much of a difference our program's made, whether it was multifamily or, or single-family. So now, the last part of my comments focused on decisions. I, again, I concur with the mayor, I support hiring a person. The skill set we're looking for in that person is, is very strongly focused actually on, you know, community outreach, effective partnerships, how do you build engagement? You know, those are skills that are going to be extremely helpful to us, regardless of the specific focus of our program on, you know, energy in one way or another, or other areas of sustainability, so I absolutely support that. I support the city staff's recommendation of focusing on three areas, and my computer has now... Can I borrow that document for a second? Sorry. And I think you need us ultimately to make a choice between the rows, the five rows in this table, is that right?
Yeah, if, if there's opinions about it, yeah.
So I just add my opinion on, on what I think would be two of the three, the, the multifamily building efficiency, and we've talked about this before, but I think that's absolutely an area to focus our attention. And then the, the residential voluntary tiered program. I just know there's demand for that, and there's, there are clearly unmet needs in the community that may cost us almost nothing to, to connect people up to, to programs that they participate in. So, you know, those two areas, I guess, would be my, my top choices. The commercial, I could see reasons to do the commercial. We've heard about community solar before. I think, you know, that, that might turn into one or two projects, but still worth doing, but I think that the other two are places where I feel strongly that we should, we should focus that, you know, first three investment.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, if we were to say what the staff's opinion is, it'd certainly be those two, as well as a direct install, just basically trying to, to capture where Pepco has available and get those dollars back into the community and then build on that.
And the direct install was also one that had a really good cost efficiency curve, if I'm remembering right, yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
I, I do think the, the hiring of a sustainability coordinator is, is job one here, because at some point in time, the city has to transition itself, whether it's this year or next year, from the Brendel Group, and get to us on its own two feet with regard to sustainability, realizing, I suppose, that we'll always have the capability of, of reaching out to, back to the Brendel Group or some other expert when we need to. And the only way to get on our own two feet is to get that sustainability coordinator brought in. So my question in that regard is, is that I would imagine that you and Mr. Kenner, the city manager, talked about, if you, if we were to go down that route, where would you position that person within the structure of the, of the, of the city government in terms of their level and ability to influence decision-making or that sort of thing?
Do you want to?
Well, Darrell and I have had just a few preliminary conversations at this point, and I, obviously, I think we would want to have a person, you know, as is sort of described in, in approach A, or even B, someone with enough presence and seniority that they really are able to lead these initiatives. I mean, I think that's the most important part. Obviously, somebody who's got some background in doing some, some sustainable items would be important. You know, we haven't thought too much yet, honestly, about exactly where in the organizational structure. I mean, obviously, I think reporting to Darrell makes a lot of sense. I know that we've got a few other, at least one other, as it relates to the Safe Grow Initiative in fiscal year 15, that we also need to be thinking about a person or halftime person somewhere, and so, you know, I, some sort of, you know, sort of connection between those two people, perhaps, with Darrell, I think is probably the best answer for right now.
Yeah, I, I understand, and it's, it's not going to be my decision. It's going to be your decision. But I, you know, and I, I understand some of the, some of the parameters, but clearly this person needs to be in a position where they can optimize their effectiveness, and because a lot of what they're going to be doing is going to be almost empirical research. Let, you know, let's, let's say we try this approach A with three strategies, and one of them seems to be moving forward, and one's stuck, and the other's not, is going backwards or something, and do we change strategies and all that sort of stuff? And they need to be able to have access to, to your, to a department head and, and the city, the deputy, and whoever else needs to be talked to about things like that. I, I'm on the side of approach A. I, I think there's something to be said for, and, you know, any of those five possible programs. I noticed that four of the five are ones that encourage, in other words, they're all working out with voluntary, getting voluntary participation. So that's really going to mean that regardless of which three we pick, it's going to be a lot of, of community work, education, face-to-face conversations with people, residents in their homes, or the building, multifamily building owners, a lot of persuasion that's going to be needing to be done to help people understand what Councilmember Mail is, you know, the, the actual dollars, because some are only going to be motivated, if at all, by that. Others aren't going to be motivated, no matter what you tell them, and, and others will want, will just want to do it just because it seems like a good idea. That's my only thought on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Darrell, thank you for the presentation. I had a question when Brendel presented about reaching out to the ownership of Essex House. Do you know if that occurred, because they're in the process of redevelopment, and I wanted to see if we could get some of these initiatives in that plan?
We did have some conversations with the planning office. Sarah Danes was a little more familiar with it. My recollection of the initial conversations is that they were kind of pretty far down the way in terms of their development plans, you know... You know, architectural drawings, you know, those types of decisions seem to have been well in the works. But I can touch base with her again and confirm if she feels like there's a, an opportunity there. I mean, part of the challenge for us yet is we don't have the sustainability coordinator in hand. It's not my background or expertise, so we're a little bit, you know, it's, it's a direction we, we assume we're going to go, but we don't have the onsite resources to really make the connection for somebody.
Right. I would support a sustainability coordinator as soon as possible. I don't want us to lose our momentum on this. The other thing is, the things that we decide, you know, how we're going to incentivize landlords to, to take action on this plan. I don't want us to get in the same situation where we have now, like in rent stabilization, where it gives landlords an opportunity to increase their rents by going through a process, but no landlords do it, right? So how are we going, I want to make sure that we, that landlords actually take advantage of this program and make improvements that make their buildings more efficient, that makes tenants that actually have to pay for their utilities, that that, that rate goes down, that we're actually doing things that people can accomplish. And I would suggest, if we can, to do like a door-to-door service. We have the personnel to do that. Just let tenants know about it, then the tenants can start bugging the landlords for them to make movement on these programs.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Some of what I've heard in the most effective multifamily programs is they actually have sort of two tiers. They have a program aimed at the ownership, the management, and they have a program aimed at the tenants. Even if the tenants don't pay for the own utilities there, there's a definite list of things that they can do as a way to manage, reduce, and understand energy use within their own buildings, be it changing out light bulbs, or, you know, those types of things. So usually, in the most effective multifamily buildings, there's a multi-pronged approach that deals with, has a program for the tenants, really focused on the tenants, and also has a program for the manager or the owners. Because they have a somewhat different, you know, interest level and trigger points.
Right. And my final suggestion would be to reach out to the management and landlords of the larger buildings, like MHP, HOC, and Southern Management. They would have more resources to take advantage of these programs. Then we could get data from them to push that to the smaller multifamily owners. But thank you for your, your work on this.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation for me also. I'll start with two points. One is to echo what Councilmember Smith said. I was wondering myself about the Essex House. And then in connection to the SafeGrow ordinance, I had reached out to, through a board member of Montgomery Housing Partnership to see about their voluntary compliance with SafeGrow on an accelerated schedule, not just in Tacoma Park, but outside. I think it makes sense to work with these larger management companies. I support hiring a sustainability coordinator. Those two points, I have a question, and then I'll give a further opinion. One thing I don't understand, I'm looking at the chart on page 27, 28 of this report. We have annual, average annual program cost over 10 years, and then we have staff resources. So, for instance, I see, oh, fifth line down, average annual program cost over 10 years is $20,000, but a staff resource of 1.2. 1.2 staff costs a whole lot more than $20,000. Can you explain the discrepancy here?
I'll have to look at it and, and get back to you, and maybe perhaps talk to the authors about what their intention was. I know in some of the columns, they have costs at the 10-year level, which isn't cumulative, but individual. And again, I don't know, I'll have to find out and get back to you.
My assumption, without knowing, would be that this would be cash outlays as opposed, and that they are not including the staff cost in the average annual program cost. But then that invites the question, you know, 1.2 staff is one of that, the sustainability coordinator, plus 0.2 of someone else. So this makes it kind of hard to evaluate the cost. So now I'll offer my opinion, which is I prefer a single strategy with an asterisk. The asterisk is the Essex House and the other buildings. That seems to be, maybe I'll say two asterisks there, the Essex House and the other buildings. That seems something that we can do by taking advantage of opportunities, redevelopment that's going, rebuilding that's going on now. The other asterisk, I found that, and I expressed this when the Brendel Group was here, that encouraged community solar projects was off-base. It was, it was poorly framed by the Brendel Group. Because I expressed that my own experience here was to get involved in discussions toward a solar co-op a number of years ago, where a group of residents would have bought equipment and placed it on buildings, and it ignored that. There are companies that will install solar equipment on your house at no cost to you. They'll sell you the power from them. I, if, if the money allows, I would ask Brendel to go back and reevaluate, rebase line the solar to not community solar, but community commercial solar. How can we promote residents and institutions in Tacoma Park using these no-cost options, no cash outlay, I should say, options to use solar power? The Brendel Group was also dismissive of it, which bothered me a bit, because they said that any savings there wouldn't count against our inventory, which is a silly form of bean counting, in my opinion. So those are the two asterisks here. The, looking at the table, I am very concerned about the addition of staff beyond the sustainability coordinator. In particular, as Councilmember Smith mentioned earlier in the meeting, something that we're all extremely aware of, our financial situation, given the reworking of tax duplication by the county. I, I'm reluctant to commit staff resources going forward more than we have to. Certain options like, I'll just pull out the, gee, what happened to it? The residential tiered voluntary program lists staff resources, full-time equivalent in year 10 of 1.7. Presumably, there'd be a ramp up or a constant level or something. I'm reluctant to commit that level of, to commit to that level of staff resource, noting that these are programs that are not single-year programs, where maybe you drop in and out. They're programs where we really would be committing for a long duration, many years. So I look at the staff resources, I look at the average annual program cost, and I look at the benefit. The benefit in this chart is given in the column GHG Emissions Impact, the total in year 10. And to me, the no-brainer that comes out of this is directly install efficient equipment and offer free products. It has a high impact relative to the others. It has an annual average program cost of $26,000, that's something. But the staff resource is 0.1. So a combination of modest staff cost, manageable, very, I should say, low staff cost, manageable modest average annual program cost, and a high return in terms of emissions says to me, this is the one that we should, that we should focus on. Thank you.
Councilmember Danes, go.
Thank you, Mayor. And Ms. Braithwaite, thank you so much for all your work on this program. It was a bit of a long time coming, and it's here, and that's exciting. I'd also like to underline hiring a sustainability coordinator as soon as possible. I'm not going to get into all the strategies and how much time it's going to take. But I know I looked at Mr. Kenner's request, and of the first four or five things on, on his request sheet, PW Director was number one on each one, you know, and, and you, you can only stretch yourself so far. And you may be stretched as far as you'll go. So you need, you, we need some help, you know, so that this can get done. I know the Task Force on Environmental.
Action.
Action is what, three or four years old now? And their number one was a coordinator. And we're like, four years later, maybe going to hire somebody. So, you know, it's not that you aren't efficient, because you're incredibly efficient. It's just that there's only so many places a human being can be in 24 hours. They need sleep sometime, boring, but sleep. So hiring somebody and, and everybody else, all my colleagues here are quite excellent at what, what and how to do it. Not the hiring of, but where to go with it, so. Hire fast.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also want to thank you, Ms. Braithwaite, for the, the material and, and working so diligently with the consultant. I'm not going to waste a lot of time. I, I again, support the hiring of the sustainability coordinator. And I concur with the staff recommendations on the strategies, with the three strategies.
Okay, and I'll just add that in the, in the three strategies that made the most sense to me, out of the five that are on the sheet behind the blue sheet, I had encouraging multifamily building efficiency, establishing a residential voluntary tiered program, and the direct install. And back to Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Yed. My colleagues' comments just wanted me, made me want to just say a few more things. Just because we've been talking about a sustainability coordinator, I don't think we need to hire a coordinator. You guys should obviously, from my perspective, feel free to call the position whatever you need to recruit the right person. On this issue, for example, of the staffing costs, you know, I think that may be the number of bodies it takes out there somewhere to implement a program, but it doesn't mean that they have to necessarily be run by the city. So for example, in DC, there's a nonprofit that essentially found a bunch of people, I think it's called DC Sun or something, found a bunch of people who were willing to commit to consider installing solar panels on their houses. And then the nonprofit put out an RFP to solar installers and said, we've got 50 potential customers, and whichever one of you can give us the lowest per-unit cost to install, you get guaranteed access to these 50 customers. So they essentially set up, you know, a preferred, you know, supplier. And that doesn't take, you know, the staffing is tiny. It takes someone, not, not you. It takes someone to be able to do that RFP, but that's an example of something where someone else provides all the work. You're just getting your, your base a discount. That's an example, I think, of a really effective residential program. So, you know, I just wanted to bring up that example, and that's, that's, I think, it's in the direction of the community solar, but it's, you know, it's one at a time. The other thing I wanted to mention was I, because of our change in law that allows access to apartment buildings, I was in an apartment building where the manager said, thanks for getting in touch, you're the first city council member who's ever contacted me in 20 years. Go for it, knock on doors all you want, which was great. One of the doors I knocked on was a, a person who works in both DC and Prince George's County as a, essentially a coordinator of HVAC, of air conditioning and heating contractors. And he was describing that what's happening in PG County and in DC is the contractors, the equipment suppliers are all working together to try to take advantage of these energy programs they have in PG and DC. He contrasted it with Montgomery County, where everybody's sort of dog-eat-dog world, competing against each other. But in both of those places, I think in Montgomery County too, they have a process for, for supply, for contractors, like HVAC contractors, to get certified. And then once they're certified, they can be an installer in these programs. So, you know, he was like, you know, I'm so glad you knocked on my door, I'd be happy to, you know, provide advice to the city if you ever get one of these energy programs up and running. But I think it's just, we, there's a whole bunch of latent capacity in our community that we haven't quite tapped into, that I see as, you know, just, we're going to, we're going to see a lot of momentum once we have a person to, to be able to connect those dots. So I'll stop there, thank you.
Councilmember Brown.
I have to remark, I feel compelled to remark, that we have in front of us a document that's called 2013 Sustainable Energy Action Plan. There is no plan in this document that's called a plan. There's nothing that gives dates, steps one should take. It's all descriptions of strategies and evaluations of those strategies. There's no plan to this plan. Councilmember Mail talked about solar, well, you know, he, he gave essentially, which is fine, a, an implementation scenario for gathering people to do solar, putting it out to bid and so on. That's something that actually gets in the direction of a plan. There's no plan in this plan, which makes it very hard to decide on this. So Councilmember Mail remarked, well, you know, the staffing cost to this might not actually be city staff. It makes it, for about the fourth time, very hard to evaluate this document, and I'm kind of unhappy with it, actually. Thank you.
Well, I will say that that's part of what will be developed in the implementation development, would be timelines and keys, key steps and, you know, goals. And so that's part of what I anticipate will be developed.
It's hard to make a decision, it's not your fault, about this when, I don't know what it's going to cost the city to do something. I don't know if the cost is going to be some external party in the scenario that Councilmember Mail mentioned and so on. I said a few minutes ago that I'm reluctant to commit the city to staffing over a period of many years, given the budget picture coming up and so on. I'm not happy about it as a basis for decision.
I'll, I'll just add that my sense is that it's to develop those types of plans so that we know what the timelines are, we know what the staffing needs are, we know what the potentials are. And the, the staffing requirements or the, or those outlined costs are decided by each council each year. So this council wouldn't be in a position of committing to expenditures associated with a, with a full-time equivalent or anything else. I think all we're, we're saying tonight is, I've heard unanimous support for going ahead and hiring a sustainability coordinator, or whatever that position is going to be called. And beyond that, we're not making any commitments and not in a position to.
Yeah, I mean, each year, there'll be the development of an annual budget for this program, as well as all the others that we put before you, and the council will have the ultimate decision about the funding level. That said, we all know it's very difficult to stop a program once it's started. So, you know, once you get on the track, it's, you know, I'll be the first to acknowledge that it's very difficult to unwind yourself. Though I think we will be, you know, a year into this, for instance, next year at this time, we'll have a lot more information about what one person can do, what other programs are available, what the opportunities are, and they can lay out some options of kind of a low-level, medium-level, and high-level gain from different, different budget scenarios. So I anticipate that this will be a program that'll continue to sort of evolve and grow, and the council will ultimately decide what it's worth to them, how much money they want to spend on Sustainable Energy Action Plan. I think, you know, we all knew going into this that clearly one of the things coming out of that is that if the city was to make any progress moving forward, it, it had to hire a position to create the program, that there wasn't going to be any internal resources that were available that could then turn into this. So, you know, I guess you shouldn't ask a question that you already know the answer of, but, you know, I think we all knew that that was kind of where this was going to lead as one step. But the, the way it evolves and the level of complexity of the program will have a lot to do with the people we hire and the council's decisions about how much funding they're comfortable in, in allocating towards this effort.
So remind us where we are in terms of current year funding and decisions that we're being asked about tonight. It sounds like there was unanimous support for hiring a sustainability coordinator, the money for that is in the current year budget.
Yes, we have, the council authorized a budget of $250,000 for sustainable action efforts for fiscal year 14. We knew that of that money, about $40,000 was going to be spent with the remainder of Brendel's contracted work, 40 or 45. So that leaves the balance of about $210,000 available. We've used some funding for the food waste program, I think about $7,000 or so has been used towards that. So that money's been allocated. Later on this month, I'll bring a proposal for you about expansion of the food waste composting program. And part of that will be, again, a recommendation that we use some of that funding in order to expand the program beyond what it is. So there are some, you know, other things that that $210,000 could be used for, it'll be based on the council's decision. We're now looking at, what, October of a, you know, not quite halfway through the year, but you could ostensibly say, at the max, we'll have six months of a person in this fiscal year. If we're able to advertise and hire and bring somebody on board in January, that would be a pretty aggressive approach. So we're looking at a position of six months of the year, which still leaves quite a bit of funding available within that existing $210,000 to make that happen, as well as what else, whatever else the council may decide to do.
And the question you're asking about the option A or option B for Brendel to complete their work, that money is what is already. their work, that money is what is already allocated in that 40 or 45?
Yeah, in the remainder, then the $40,000, $45,000 that was, we knew they were going to, we were going to spend on them this year.
Okay. So what I've heard so far is, as I say, the unanimous support for the sustainability coordinator, and it sounded like near unanimous, but not unanimous, support for option A with the three options, and I've heard, I didn't keep track, but it sounded like a fair amount of support for the encouraging multifamily building efficiency and establishing residential voluntary tiered program, and I venture to say also the direct install, so the first, third, and fifth options there. I'd look to my colleagues to confirm that or say that that's not, in fact, where the majority wanted to go, but that's what I heard.
Confirm.
Okay. So I think we've answered your questions. Are there other things that we need to do this evening?
No, I'm walking out of here with a lot more than I thought I was going to get, so I'm thrilled.
And Mayor, if I could, one more. I had made a number of recommendations in terms of the report. I think I could have read into councilmember Grimes's comments, some suggestions. Is there, you know, could you, do you sense that there's any encouragement to improve the final product in terms of the report we get? Is that fair to say?
Do we have that flexibility?
Oh, yes, yeah. I think, yeah, I mean, in my experience with the Brendel folks, is they're more than open to constructive criticism. They want this to be a report that the city loves, uses, and can actively support, so.
So it sounds like the.
It's on the record.
Those things are doable as well.
Yeah, I have Tim's specific comments that if there's additional comments that may, or questions that you think might help in bringing clarity to it, just send them my way, and I can forward them on.
Well, start would be, yeah, clarification on the costs of staff versus cash outlay, you know, what exactly that stuff on the table means. That would be a good starting point for additional work.
Okay.
And I also would add my thank yous for your time and efforts and leadership on this. I think it's been terrific.
So stockpile all these thank yous and use them when you need them.
Absolutely. The next time somebody yells at you about me, you'll remember that.
Thanks a lot. And we're, we've completed our agenda for this evening. We're adjourned.
Love it, love it, love it. Second. I know, but I don't.